All right, good evening ladies and gentlemen. And we are in the meeting, our regular meeting at Lakeport City Council this evening. We are back in closed session and we have no reportable action. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Turner, present. Councilmember Matina?
Here.
Councilmember Parlett?
Here.
Councilmembers Spillman?
Here.
And Mayor Shaw?
Here. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening ladies and gentlemen. For those of you wishing to speak publicly tonight, you will have the opportunity to do so on each of our agenda items. We do ask that you please wait until we are taking out that item and I will ask for public comment and/or input. If you wish to comment on something that is not on tonight's agenda, you may do so during open public comment. We ask that you fill out a white form that are on the table when you enter council chambers and please hand that form to the clerk. Please understand that council cannot come to consensus or make any decisions on any items that are not on tonight's agenda. You're going to have to have that kid removed, man.
Who would bring their kid here?
Who would bring their kid to council meeting? I have no idea. First item is accepted to the agenda. Do we have any urgency items this evening?
No.
I've seen that. I haven't entertained a motion on the agenda.
Well, we need to pull one item from the agenda, yes.
Oh, that's right. So, we will be pulling IMC Finance Director Ward as our finance director is on vacation. So, accepting the agenda with that amended.
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda with the IMC pulled.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consent agendas next. These are items that are usually routine and non-controversial. And tonight, we will be waiving the reading of any ordinances except by title. We'll be approving the warrant registers from June 18, 2015, and July 1, 2015. We will also be approving the minutes of the special city council meeting on June 11, 2015, and the regular city council meeting of June 16, 2015. I can't imagine any of those items needing to be pulled, but if there are any, any council members? Anyone from the public wish to comment or pull one of these items from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have any public input? A couple items seem huge now. Ms. Shaw, come on up, please, Wilton. You have a shadow. Good evening.
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. It is my pleasure to introduce Morgan Wells, who is the new Community Outreach and Fund Development Specialist at Southern Lakeside Hospital. She's going to tell you a little bit about herself.
Hi, everybody. How are you?
Good evening.
So, I live in Port from Ohio and I'll tell a quick story about how I got out here, which is kind of interesting. I was visiting a college buddy of mine in San Francisco who works for Center Health and it was the week of the Governor's Symposium. So, I went up to Lake Tahoe, if you're interested, I remember about it, and sat next to Siri Nelson at supper and she said, "We have a communication position open and we're looking for somebody." And that's something that's never been spoken in the English language before. So, I came up and interviewed for the position and fell in love with Lakeport and everybody that I met, including people that was on the interview panel. And so, in eight weeks' time, moved out here and started a new job. So, I've just been getting acclimated and I'll be ready to head toward us.
Thank you. Welcome. Welcome to Lakeport. Absolutely. Thank you, Wilton. Mr. Rolland.
What do you think? Can I give you a little update on the Westside Community Park? Because you probably don't want to see my face. That's what I'm here for. A few things have happened since I was here the last time. We do have a caretaker in place now and we worked with the city together to get the house ready. They've been in there now for about two months and I'll tell you, it's wonderful to have somebody. I've only been on the lawnmower like three times this year. So, it's nice to have somebody mowing the grass, picking up the trash. And they've had a real positive impact just on the environment out there. One vandal was arrested as a result. Richard seeing somebody over there who was destroying the porta potty on the rotary field. Karen pulled up aside, did some other things. Richard saw him, called the police. That was taken care of. We have some issues out there with, you know, people have come and stolen things in the past. We don't seem to have so much traffic going through the unused property right now. People that used to, that maybe living around there are going around instead of cutting through. They've had less reason to call the police department out there now. So, in addition to taking care of the cleanup, they've been making the place more secure, which I think was our goal. They've hauled off two more of those giant dumpsters of stuff from the caretaker property. You know, the city hauled away three, I think. Kiwanis hauled away one. So, that's about half a dozen of those big dumpsters that they've taken away. The property is pretty well cleaned now. The city came in and did some weeding with the flail mower and then the caretakers have been out doing the hand stuff and the property is pretty well cleaned up and fire safe now out there. So, it's been a positive experience so far. We have baseball out there for the first time this year. Well, last year, we had some practice going on, but we did have an agreement with the West Shore League this year and they leased the fields and practiced on both of the fields. And then, when their junior league started, the Westside Park Field was the junior league's home field. And there were six teams, I think, in their league. And so, all of those teams came and played on this field and then they hosted a tournament that brought in teams also. And I know that in their league was Kelseyville, Harbuckle, Maxwell, Middle County, and Lowerlake. So, all of those folks were here. And for the tournament, all of those folks were here. And I think they had a couple of other teams from the Central Valley as well. So, finally, we had some baseball. It was a very nice thing. You'll be seeing some things on future plans. We've been working with a group at once. So, these plans would be in the area to the south of the Jane Barnes Field, in the Phase Two area that we have our lease on and have been working on. There's a group that's come and they're interested in developing some sand courts out there. So, this would call for a change in the plan as the way it's been developed, but we've met with them several times. We sent it back to the engineer a couple of times. They've been working with the engineer that did the original plans on the Phase Two area. So, we've passed that on down. I think it's to Mark now and so he's going to work up a staff report and I think we've seen a presentation on that proposed change at some point. You did give us permission to start looking at the horse area and the horse people we're meeting today and developing a conceptual plan of what they can do in the space that's available. So, we hope to get a meeting together with the city engineer and probably with Mark and go over that plan here pretty soon, just as a preliminary plan, as a way to get started and see what might fit into the area that's being developed. Those things are happening. The memorial grove that we talked about last year at our Grove on the Green, which would be a way to do the landscaping behind the Jane Barnes Field sign, so between the Jane Barnes Field sign and the field of play is a large area. And we decided to do the memorial grove there where you could, for $200, have a tree planted, have a plaque. And we'll unveil a little more about this at grilling this year. We got the water line extended. We were hoping to get some trees planted this year, but we're a bunch of volunteers, so things take a while. We did get the water line extended that we needed to irrigate those trees, so I think in the fall, we'll be able to plant now. And I think you'll really like what we're proposing and we'll unveil a grilling as I said for sure. That area will also have a very nice concrete bench from the same company that makes the signs, all the signs the city buys and signs that we put out at the park. Clear Lake Trowel and Trowel's Club purchased a bench and it was delivered in time that it sat, that people sat on it at the baseball field. And it'll be moved over into the memorial grove and we can get that planted. We're also submitting a grant to the Lakeport Women's Civic Club. They're offering this to nonprofits in the area, so I'm sure they'll give any of us a line. But we would like to fund a permanent porta potty, like the one that was put in at the rotary field that's on a concrete foundation. So, we'd like to have that. We buy four sets of portable bleachers that could be used at the two baseball fields and they could be moved out onto the soccer field during soccer season. And then, the third thing that we'd fund with what's left of that money is we're talking about starting a, I think it's called a park horse. So, along the paved jogging walking trail that we have there now, there would be exercise stations along the way. So, I think with the money that's left, we can get maybe four or five pieces of equipment. Aaron Jameson, if any of you know him, he's a personal trainer in the area. So, I've contacted him and he's giving us some input on what would be appropriate pieces of equipment. We found a supplier that has very good, you know, steel powder coated equipment that can get anchored down and will last for a long time out there. So, we're working on that. And then, the last thing would be grilling. You know, we have our Grove on the Green coming up and there are flyers. There's flyers on Grove on the Green on the back table in case any of you are interested. Also, tickets in my hand. $25, get you samplings from all the grillers. As most people say, it's more than you can possibly eat. Delicious desserts. I think we're still talking, I know Nancy Rizika's provided desserts the last couple of years, so I think we're going to talk to Nancy again. Maybe I shouldn't say that she might be here, so.
She's hiding in the garage.
I know we'll talk to Councilman Parlett about his beans. He's always donated beans to us. We have nine grilling teams at the moment. One of those is a city team that Dan Buffalo said there would be a city team. So, I certainly invite any of you who are available. It's nice for the park committee, it's nice for the community to see council people back here in the city's booth, you know, helping with the grilling. So, we appreciate it, many of you are able. I know that the mayor has a commitment every year at that time because I've tried to solicit him to be our MC, but he's always opting an auctioneer somewhere.
Because I've tried to lobby you to change the date.
But we certainly enjoy your participation in this. We're trying to get another one or two grillers. We have, as I said, we have nine teams and we have 10. We're in pretty good shape. It's more food than you can eat. So, the LC Diamonds will be playing again this year and we are adding wagon rides by Andre, who has the big Persian horses and the large wagon in halls at the fair, the county fair. People from the horse barn up to the animals back there. So, we're going to have wagon rides that will take people out into the back forty acres and ride you around there, show you what's out there. And we'll have it flagged off the area that is going to be the horse area eventually, so that people can see where that is. And the wagon rides are sponsored by the Lake County Horse Council. I might have taken more than my three minutes.
No, that's quite a lot.
That's all right, too.
Dennis, when you said it's a bunch of volunteers getting things done, what you guys have accomplished with volunteers and donations is incredible and the timing is even more incredible. So, yeah, our hats off to you.
Well, thank you. I'll pass that along to the committee.
Absolutely. Any questions for Dennis?
I have one question. What sand courts? You mentioned sand courts.
What they're really, they would be multi-use. What they're really interested in is...
Volleyball and stuff like that.
What they're interested in is something that I had never heard of called beach handball. And there actually is a Lake County beach handball team that went and played at a tournament in Georgia. And if you agree we do this, this would be the first permanent facility on the western part of the United States. Pretty much, they set up and play at, you know, on beaches and things like that, but these guys are interested in. They're going to bring the money to bear to do it. So, hopefully, in the next meeting or two, you'll get a presentation from them.
It's kind of like water polo running on sand. You can watch it. That's the best way. I was picturing them bouncing balls and it's not that. It's not, it's also not impact, which is, I mean, there's no...
No contact.
Yeah, there's no contact. It's very strange and stuff.
Yeah, they have goals at either end and, you know, if we think of an handball that they're passing a softball around, you know, so the videos I've seen are pretty exciting. You'll hear more.
Okay, thank you very much, Dennis.
Thank you all.
And I would definitely recommend to, since we have a nice crowd out there tonight, that if you have not been on the grilling on the green, I did get to go to one in the beginning, it's definitely worthy and you will not go home hungry, that's for sure. All right, thanks again, Dennis. We're ready to go. All right, we have introduction of a new intern. Ms. Winneal.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I want to introduce Brittany Benner, our summer intern. You may have seen her around City Hall. She's working in the mornings in the Administrative Services Department. Brittany is a second-year student now and she attended Cal State East Bay, I want to say Hayward, Cal State East Bay last year. And then, this year, she'll be staying in the area and attending the Madison College. She has just hit the ground running. She's doing a great job. She's helping us with our conversion over to the new software. The human resources information that's in a standalone database needed to be put into the new system and she's doing a great job of keeping us on track and getting a lot of inputting done and has blown through like a lot of the work that we had for her, so we're giving her more. And she's doing a great job and just say hi.
Well, welcome to City of Lakeport. And keep it up and pretty soon, you'll get to see what the bottom of Carnegie looks like. Welcome. Thank you, Kelly. All right, our next item is continued from our regular meeting of June 16 and this is the appeal of the planning commission of a cell phone tower. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, real quickly to kind of bring you guys up to date. Upon the conclusion of the public hearing on the 60th of June, your council directed staff to go ahead and prepare findings for the granting of the appeal and the overturning of the planning commission decision on May 13.
We can't hear him.
Am I not even on? There we go. I'll say that again, real quick. Following the conclusion of the June 16 city council meeting, your council directed staff to go ahead and prepare a draft resolution containing findings for upholding the appeal and overturning the planning commission decision of May 13. Staff has completed that. That's in your packet for review tonight, I believe it's attachment to... Yes. Since that timeout or the draft resolution, I mean, kind of in a synopsis, kind of compiles all the different concerns that were brought forth to you guys on the 16th meeting, those include the height of the tower not being consistent with surrounding development, the proposed monopane design not being compatible with the neighborhood's aesthetic character, and then also that other suitable locations that may be less visibly intrusive for the sighting of the wireless communication facility, but also serving the needs of filling the gap in service in the area are also available to meet those demands for the Central Lakeport area. Subsequent to the last meeting on June 16, the city has been in contact with the applicant and believe that it may be possible to find us some possible alternative locations and or possibly designs and kind of coming up with a more mutually beneficial project that both takes into account the gap in service in the area, but also the residential concerns and the commercial development concerns. And as such, the applicant has formally requested 60-day continuance of this appeal to more thoroughly evaluate those alternatives. So, staff's prepared kind of two separate options for you guys with the corresponding motions, one being the granting of the 60-day continuance and then the other one for you guys' consideration of the resolution depending on which direction you guys choose. I think both the appellant and the applicant are both in attendance tonight as well.
Thank you, Kevin. Ms. Walker, can you come on up? Regarding the continuance request.
Good evening. So, Mr. Ingram actually summarized this very well, Verizon would like additional 60 days in order to thoroughly analyze possible alternative locations, possible alternative locations on the parcel, and alternative designs. The community development director has actually asked us to consider some other designs. We've been working internally to see if that's feasible, producing photo sims and such. So, we would like to formally request 60-day continuance in order to fully investigate possible alternatives.
So, that was designed as in the same location with a different design?
Correct.
Or alternative locations?
Alternative locations outside the parcel or alternative locations within the parcel.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Ms. Rizika, Nancy, did you want to speak before I open it up for the general public? Okay. And ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to open it up for public comment, but once again, this is not the public hearing regarding the cell tower issue at this time. We are merely discussing whether or not to grant continuance to Verizon, which in effect would be just shy of 60 days, would be our September 1 meeting. So, that's, we could keep the comments to that. I understand this is kind of a broad range.
I just wanted to note that if there was, if the council did want to grant a continuance, that there would be a public hearing at that later date so that the public would have another opportunity to comment.
And then, maybe before we open this up to the public too, could you, you know, I mean, at this point in granting continuance, just give us a quick overview of what that means for the city? And if we chose to go another direction, you know, if we chose to approve the appeal, what potential outcomes we could be looking at from Verizon as well, if that's appropriate at this time?
Well, with respect to a continuance, the council, under our municipal code, has the ability to modify the conditions on revoke permits that were originally granted by the planning commission. So, it is, the council does have the power to actually approve an alternative use permit where that could come before the council after a 60-day continuance. So, that is one possibility. If the council wants to approve the resolution as drafted or with some minor changes, then we will provide notice to the applicant and to the appellant. And either party would have an opportunity to challenge that decision if they felt that was in their best interests in a court. But the council's decision is the final decision with respect to that location and that design. Verizon could come back with a different, with an application for a different location, I mean, but they wouldn't be able to come back at least for, what, 12 months, Kevin? You know, for that location.
Well, if it was a new location and we go back before the planning commission...
Right.
...use permits you're talking, you know, there's...
The whole...
You're talking about probably a six to eight month process for a new use permit for a new location.
For a new location.
All right, thanks, David. All right, this time, we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment and we will try to keep folks' comments to around three minutes if we could. So, please, ladies and gentlemen, at your leisure, when you do come up, please state your name for the record. And if you would like it spelled correctly in on the record, there should be a pen and a sign in list there where you can write your name down for correct spelling. So, whoever starts, come up, please.
My name is Fred Fig, F.I.G.G. I own the parcel right next door to their, to the proposed site. And regardless of an alternative...
Design.
Design, that's a better word. It just not, doesn't fit the area. I have to look at it no matter what design it is. And it just isn't, it isn't conducive for where, for a cell tower to be there. There's areas outside the perimeter of, let's say, a sphere of influence, the Safeway site. There's just better places for a site, for a cell tower, regardless of its height, size, or whatever. So, I propose that you approve the appeal and disregard the continuance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fig. You're next. Come on up, please.
Hi. My name is Suzie King. I live in Lakeport and I have one question that in the event that you do...
Suzanne, could you pull that mic towards you there?
In the event that you do approve the 60-day continuance for Verizon, how is it that Verizon would learn of the alternative sites that are in fact available? Would that be information that you would provide, the county would provide, or would it be dependent upon Verizon's own research?
It would be dependent upon Verizon's research. I mean, we could, you know, as a city directed to could, you know, potentially look at obtaining a consultant or something like that to research our own sites. But I mean, I, you know, as any application that comes in, that generally falls upon the applicant to choose their site location and perform the required studies.
Is it something that could be advertised in the paper so that if there were parcel owners that were interested in partaking, that they could come forth and work with Verizon on an alternative site?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, if Verizon wanted to take that undertaking, they could, but I mean, they have a process, you know, similar to this one where they kind of looked and contacted, you know, several different owners and for whatever reasons, rolled out a few of them and eventually picked this site.
It just seems advisable to me anyway, but it'd be good if it could come from multiple sides as opposed to just to Verizon's choosing if at all possible. Thank you.
Thanks, Suzanne.
Good evening. Suzanne Lyons. Seems to me, I remember the last time I was here, that what it seemed to me that Verizon said to us was, if it wasn't this site, it wasn't going to be anywhere. Now, suddenly, we want 60 days to look at other sites. I do remember talking about the pine trees and being told by the people from Verizon that there was a stand of trees that was tall as this proposed pine tree that would blend in with. And now, I'm looking at the city report that says there are no similarly sized pine trees in the area. It's twice as tall as the surrounding buildings. Things seem to change. One of the things that it says, and I had to read this twice in the city's findings, I don't know if I can find it now, about an alternative site being 1833 North High Street. And that's the High Street Shopping Center. And I know that Nancy Rizika stated here that that is not an alternative site. So, I'm just concerned that the story changes. And I'm really concerned that doing business with anybody where the story changes. I know that we were told that if it was not this one, Verizon was going to go someplace else and the people in Lakeport could pass a sale. So, why is it different now? I really think that everybody's come here once, everybody's come here twice. Why are we getting a third bite of the apple? I really think that the people have told you what they want and that you're the council. You should be listening.
And Kevin, real quick, on the findings too, it's my understanding that we were unaware that that location was no longer viable due to the owner?
Well, I think that the site is listed in there not necessarily as being the only physical alternative, but just as, to identify that there are other locations. Because it was stated in the record before that this was the only site. And so, using the alternative site, so that this was in the same general location, I don't think that it was meant to say that this is the only site, the only other possible site that it can go. I think it was just listed in there as...
Originally.
As a potential site, you know, demonstrating that there are other alternatives. As far as the change in the stand of trees goes, yeah, Suzanne's absolutely right. I mean, in the original staff report, it was, you know, staff's determination that there were other trees in the area of similar size. But it shows up in the findings because based on the public testimony that was given. Those findings were based off that public testimony where it was felt that there are not, there are not other similarly sized stands of trees. So, that's why it shows up. That's why that story changes.
Thanks, Kevin. Next, please, in the public. I knew you couldn't stand it.
No, I just said it really quick. I agree with Mr. Fig. I agree with what Mrs. Lyons just said. And I'm not going to repeat what they said. But in the unlikely event, hopefully, we do consider this continuance request as someone who pays taxes around here and everything else that supports the city, so let them have another free bite of the apple. Your staff is going to wind up putting the same amount of time they probably put in this in the beginning. And it's not unusual for agencies to charge fees for continuances or for reapplications or whatever. And the city council should at least consider conditioning the request for the continuance with a fee that will pick up his time and whatever, you know, this whole show costs money. money. If they wanted to get another run at it, they should pay for it.
Thank you, Bob. That was Bob Bridges for the record. Next, come on up, please. Anyone?
My name is Donna Bryce, I'm a retired teacher, also a retired member of the U.S.A. Water Street Team. I just wanted to, I missed the last meeting, and I do live in the Delago area. The site where the cell tower is proposed is a crosswalk where children walk every day, Monday through Friday, to school. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
I don't know if I'm walking to the gallops or not.
I think that's us, actually.
Uh, no.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Leah Passantino. I am the owner of the 1171th Street property, the 8.2 acre property, that Horizon had considered and eliminated, but I think it deserves a second look in the fact that Horizon selected a portion of the property that was less than 1,000 feet from the daycare center. The eight and a half, 8.2 acres, according to these maps, is 1,001 feet from the daycare center. So I'm going to leave these maps here for you, Kevin, and you can decide if you guys want to do them now.
Thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else wish to speak? Now is your opportunity. Come on up, Nancy. Well, now that we know that you make desserts for growing on the screen, we may require you to bring those to council meetings.
Nancy Rizica. I have with me copies of Mrs. Passantino's letter that I gave to the city clerk at the last, well, I thought I had it there just a moment. Excuse me, I have that other large folder. I have got so many papers on this that I have to carry them around, I have to carry them around in cardboard box. So what I have for you, unfortunately, I definitely have them in my hand, but I have copies of Mrs. Passantino's letters. I did get one off to Kenny Parlett, the rest of you I didn't get around to delivering personally. But the city clerk has it saying that she would still be interested in entering back into escrow with Verizon on the 8.2 acres on 11th Street. On Thursday, during the week, I kept asking, where is the attorney's response on the resolution that you asked staff to repair, if I had to repair? And I did right away, when he came, get a copy of Complete Wireless Consulting's letter request and continuance from Mr. Ingram. I really appreciate that on Tuesday. And Thursday I was very busy, I was over town on a couple of projects, and it was after 5:00 before I was able to respond to the staff report and the resolution. And I'm kind of disappointed that maybe Kevin didn't happen to get a chance to review it today and consider, have you considered some of the points I made regarding the request for a continuance and the staff report and the resolution? I feel there's some things that are incorrect. So I have some copies right in here.
Was that what you emailed?
Yes.
I guess they've been provided, yeah, they were provided in this.
So in order to keep it brief, unfortunately, tonight we're not anxious to get out of here because of a Warriors playoff that we all missed. But there's some key points, and I hope you would look at them. I won't belabor the thing, but I'm very disturbed about some things in here that I think are incorrect, and I think we should review them right now. And I'd like to ask that you approve our appeal tonight, as you indicated you would at the last meeting, and accept an application for another site at a later date. That night I proposed two other locations, one was Mrs. Passantino's, and the other was the possibility of roof of the courthouse. These sites were initially identified by Verizon, and it absolutely amazed me that you can find nine or 10 sites, and all of a sudden this is the only one that'll work. Give me a break. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, here we go. I have her right on top. I'm getting a little nervous. Okay, here's copies of the letter from Mrs. Passantino for the rest of you, and copies of the map that was measured by our staff showing an alternate site. There's more than one site on the 8.2 acres, and the area where she feels would still be unobtrusive. And it's 1,001 feet away from the daycare, and I still don't understand why Verizon didn't want to go to a solid site because it was within 1,000 feet of the daycare. Well, she's identified one that's 1,001 feet, so.
I'll give you one for each of you. Chief of Counsel, and for Kevin. And if you have a letter, copy of Mrs. Passantino's letter.
Explaining all it, you know, that they were actually in escrow. My opinion is that this site that has, the staff has worked with Verizon on, was finally chosen for Verizon because it is paved, it is fenced, and there is very little cost for improving this site. Thank you.
Thank you again, Nancy.
And if you have any questions, thank you.
Anyone else from the public like to comment? Last chance on this item. And once again, we are only discussing the continuance issue at this point in time. So if there's no one else, I will close the public comment, and I will bring it back to council for questions, comments?
I have two quick questions. Probably the first one might be for Kevin. If the original applicant picks another site after a proposed 60-day continuance, what's the benefit opposed to, for them, let's say, opposed to just picking another site and going forward again? Is there any time saved? Is there any...
No, not that's, I will, no, there wouldn't be any real time savings depending upon, you know, if they submitted a new application within that 60-day period, then there would be some time savings coming back 60 days later. But no, there's no real change if they wanted to come in and apply for a different location now or 60 days, it would be the same process.
So it sounds like maybe the only benefit would be, maybe, I'm just implying maybe would be that they're either choosing an alternative look or an alternative location of the original proposed location, maybe.
Or some indication from, from the council that their alternative site, you know, is proper.
David? Dangers of granting the appeal at this point?
Dangers of granting the appeal? Well, as we've discussed with the council at the prior meeting, the Federal Telecommunications Act preempts much of what local jurisdictions can do with respect to the sighting of cell phone towers. So for instance, we discussed last time about the radio frequency emissions and how that's not a proper basis for the denial of a cell tower application. The other, the other point is that the carriers are entitled to build towers in areas that cover a significant, what's called a significant gap in coverage, and they are entitled to put those towers in the least intrusive feasible location. And that's the legal test that a court applies to determine that. And if a court finds that a city has denied a carrier from putting a tower in the least, least intrusive feasible location, then that, under the Telecommunications Act, is a denial of service, and that decision can be overturned. So, you know, the danger is that, that Verizon would institute a lawsuit against the city and try to show that there was no feasible, less intrusive or even intrusive alternative site, and that the proposed resolution is contrasted with and eye forward for that possibility.
Questions from council?
I have a, you know, it's least intrusive feasible location, see? And who is making the rules for what is considered to be feasible? It seems to me, as I read through the options, that Verizon said, well, this one doesn't going to work because there's a, there's a gap over on 20th Street on the Passantino property, for example. And this one isn't going to work because it's on the courthouse. And some guy down there said that we already have two cell towers, and we're not going to entertain putting another one up there. And so those aren't feasible based on what they said was feasible. So it's kind of like they're writing the rules on what's feasible, whereas maybe an independent observer...
While council's discussing, please refrain from clapping and cheering, if you would, please, thank you.
But anyway, that's the problem that I have, because if there are numerous locations, and they determine themselves, based on their own findings, that this is the least, this wasn't feasible, and it's the least intrusive, well, we already know that it's intrusive. But it's the least intrusive feasible location, and it kind of ties our hands. And, but at the same time, as I mentioned at the previous meeting, the last thing I want to do, because I've read through the litany of all these different court cases, and they have a bank of some very capable lawyers that are ready to come down here and rip us a big one, and at a huge cost to the city. So the thing that worries me is this word feasible in this, in this sentence, whereas, you know, the 11th Street, the courthouse, those two look like maybe there's some room for negotiations. And ergo, I wouldn't have a problem with letting him go 60 days in a continuance, negotiate with Passantino, negotiate with courthouse, find room up there, and you wouldn't even notice it, that kind of a thing, I'm fine with. But this feasible location thing, if that's going to stick, as far as they're concerned, then for me to say, we're going to give them the continuance, and then they're going to come up here with a bunch of reasons why this is the only feasible one, and it's in this location when everybody is against it, you know, that, that's what concerns me. So what's the drift on that? I mean, is that feasible word, that they're in control of that?
No, a judge is going to decide what's feasible, and a judge is going to consider all the municipal evidence before her or him. Some of that evidence will likely be things that Verizon or whatever carrier that was involved would put forward. But the defendant also has the right to put forward its evidence as to what other feasible locations exist. And the, the resolution is indicated in there that there are other feasible locations, there are other locations that would fill the purported gap in coverage, and that those hadn't been exhausted, based on the application.
Well, the problem I have is that they're experts, and they've been in court, and they've been in court numerous locations, probably in cities just like this all over the state, trying to say that the other ones aren't feasible, this one is. And the, say Nancy would have to go out and hire some expert to say that, no, no, wait a minute, these are feasible, and go against her ex, the Verizon experts. This is the kind of thing that concerns me, because they have the tools, they've been doing this, this is their, this is their job. We're just trying to make people happy with, trying to deny something that isn't in the proper location, and we don't like the design, and we don't want it there, and are there other feasible locations in it? And if we have to prove that, that could be a battle, and I don't know that Nancy's willing to put up the money, and how the cities would have to do that. I, that's where I'm really worried about, just feasibility study.
It, it's certainly an option for the council to direct staff to, to hire an expert that would look at and analyze the evidence that Verizon has put forward and to do its own coverage analysis. That's, that is something that other cities do. And it is expensive, and I don't know off the top of my head how much stuff like that costs, but it is something that is an option.
You know, David, real quick, with Councilmember Parlett and Stilman, part of their questions, regardless of continuance, or if there were a continuance, if a different location comes to light that is negotiated or offered or was agreed to, that doesn't that still have to go back to the planning commission again? So, I mean, really, this continuance really is only finding some other solution to the property in question.
Well, I mean, the continuance would either find an alternative design at the home location, which wouldn't have to go back to the planning commission. Or it could evolve into finding an alternative site, which would then have to be something that the planning commission would look at in the first instance. But there would be 60 days to discuss with Verizon how, how we wanted to proceed with closing out this appeal, and then beginning that new, new site permit.
They'd basically be starting over the permit process, other than all the information that's already been gathered.
Yeah, correct.
That's what I'm trying to figure out is the difference between the two, is it basically a more business-friendly way of handling it?
A continuance. Perfect.
Good question.
Well, it, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's, I think from a policy perspective, you could say, you know, we want good cell coverage in Lakeport, and we want to work with Verizon to help make that happen. You know, this monopied in this particular location doesn't work, we don't want to just, you know, boo you out. I think that was one thing that Verizon mentioned at the last hearing. If this doesn't work, then, you know, there just may not be good coverage in Lakeport, and that's maybe not something that Lakeport wants. And so 60-day continuance gives at least the opportunity for the parties to talk on that.
Folks, please. Thank you.
I don't have any questions. I think that, that staff has done a good job drafting the findings of the resolution, and I think it makes our position very clear. I also can see the benefits of having significant gaps in coverage not be so significant. Recently, at a community event, law enforcement was trying to identify the location of someone who was deemed dangerous to society, was a threat. And they were, it was a challenge because of a gap in our coverage. They weren't able to, you know, it, it, in locating someone in case of emergency or in case of interoperability and the need for emergency services, things like that, cell phone coverage, adequate cell phone coverage is essential. And so I, I am comfortable with the position that we have already taken. I, I think that our message has been very clearly delivered to Verizon regarding this specific location and this specific design. I, I am okay with granting a 60-day continuance because I don't think that will change our position. And it will enable our city to work with Verizon to find a better, more appropriate site that, that won't have this, this land use conflict between residential and cell phone.
Can I call Jim back up to ask one more question?
Yeah, please, Ms. Park.
I'm going to really put you on the spot here with a very specific David-type question. If we granted the 60-day continuance, the proposed 60-day continuance, but we only made it pertaining to evaluating alternative sites, and... it pertaining to evaluating alternative sites and not the original location, would you or who you're representing be interested in that only?
I would say probably no.
Okay.
And if I may, a big part of it is, you know, speaking with the community development director, we are trying to find a facility that will work for both parties. You know, and they have asked us to look at alternative designs as well as different locations on the parcel in an alternative location. You know, so in the spirit of cooperation, we want to continue that, you know, try to find a mutually beneficial result.
One of the citizens had mentioned last time he said he would just move on. Would that comment maybe not, would it just maybe a quick comment that actually you do plan to find a place in Lakeport to improve the service?
Well, like I said, you know, it's not by decision, it's dependent on the radio frequency engineer's decision. From our investigation now, there is no alternative location. Again, we have our question.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, Ms. Walker, give you the respect of not speaking of while you are speaking. And I do request that you do the same, please. Thank you.
So, during our investigation, we found that there is not a feasible alternative at this time. And, you know, this is the best location. There is a significant coverage gap being experienced here and I believe it's 3,400 citizens live in this area that we're trying to cover. So, at this time, there is no alternative location, but again, that would be the determination of the radio frequency engineer to decide if an alternative location in the city of Lakeport is viable, but at this time, there is not.
Questions? Councilmember Ms. Walker?
So, then the 60-day continuance would be an unwelcome, or the request would be withdrawn, so to speak, if it was only limited to different sites?
So, if the limitation is put on the continuance just with an alternative site?
Correct.
Would we withdraw our request for continuance?
I think it's not a rewording of what you were, okay, I just wanted to make it clear because I find that very difficult.
I don't think we would withdraw our request for continuance, but is that what we are requesting or is that the reason we are requesting that? We would not withdraw our request. But specifically, we will want the ability to fully analyze, you know, whether there are alternative locations, alternative designs and alternative locations within the parcel now.
So, then, when you were mentioning that you were looking for alternative designs and kind of like not really alternative locations, you're meaning that you're going to come back here with some kind of a flagpole or some other kind of design that these people here embrace and they think is just great, despite the fact there's an overwhelming desire to have it moved somewhere else, that you would actually work hard to try and figure out some way, find something that would be compatible with all of this contention here?
Yes.
And you actually think that could happen?
Yes, and we would like the opportunity to have that time to do a proper investigation.
And you would be spending most of your energy on that rather than trying to find an alternative location?
No, sir, we would spend our time looking to see possible alternative locations, possible alternative locations within the parcel and possible alternative designs.
Does Verizon ever do community outreach before you go into a community where you're going to put a tower in a neighborhood and have a community meeting and show them what you're looking at doing and get some feedback before you get to this point? Because, you know, some of the community hasn't even seen what you actually do. And I'm wondering, you know, could have come in and slipped it through real easily, but also I would think this happens more frequently. Why, why not do community outreach ahead of time and see what people want and need?
Yeah, so some jurisdictions do require a community meeting or strongly encourage community meetings. For instance, the city of Oakland does that, city of Berkeley, city of Cupertino. That's something that's normally suggested by staff, which Verizon willingly and happily does at our own cost. In this specific situation, we didn't have any feedback from, from the residents. We had the support of the community.
Folks, please.
We had the approval of, unanimous approval of the planning commission. So, it was never requested of Verizon, but that is something that we undertake if, you know, if that is a request from a jurisdiction.
Those to come in the future, we will ask for that.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Well, so it looks like we still have a decision here that, you know, for me, I don't think the outcome is still very clear on a continuance with, you know, location being the main issue. Regardless, if location is, if we come to consensus to, you know, we don't want it there, the community doesn't want it there, then really the continuance is, really becomes null and void. Because they're going to have to go back to a planning commission meeting anyway. They may still do that process.
The problem is that they decide not to take the time to do that because if they feel so solid that this is the only way to fill the gap, then they may find that our findings are not solid and then we have a really big problem.
The thing that scares me is, you know, that we had a session at the League of Cities and it talked about values and citizens and then your responsibility to the city as the fiduciary and to make decisions based on, you know, proven information and where you stack up your moral values and your, you know, what you owe to the community. But one of the things as a business person, the last thing that I want to get into is some very contentious, expensive lawsuit because of, you know, the way the laws are written doesn't necessarily mean that because we want to do the right thing, that we aren't going to get our butts sued off anyway. And so, the, that's my biggest concern is that, you know, sure, we don't want it there, we're not going to let it go there, it isn't going to happen, but nevertheless, that's not going to stop them from, they already have these guys on retainer, they're already being paid, they're going to come marching in here with papers and we're going to be sued because we did, because it's the least intrusive feasible location and they want to contest that, that we have the appeal over, upheld it. So, my concern is that if we do the 60 days and kind of a business-friendly, at least we'll postpone the lawsuit by some couple months until we can get our ducks in a row and maybe hire somebody to do that. But I, I think David said it very succinctly, we want to work with Verizon, we want to fulfill the needs for the 3,400 people and we don't want to risk public safety because they don't have cellphone service, but we don't want it right there. And these people don't want it right there, whether it's a flagpole or a pine tree or a hot air balloon sitting there, we, these people do not want that there. And I don't know how she could not send that message back and say, this isn't going to fly, we're going to go to court. So, that's, that's where I kind of stand on it. But I think that the 60-day continuance might be the, the best opportunity to get their ducks in a row, maybe she can go back and say, listen, they're not, this isn't going to fly and it's going to be costly for both parties. So, that's where I'm standing is maybe we can let them decide that maybe they better reconsider another location and do that.
That could be their opportunity to really go.
Yeah, because, you know, it's not going to fly, I mean, and I think I feel the same with the rest of us because of these people there. So, that's how I feel about it. If we can get some, you know, kind of come a little bit, 50% each way and we can find something, otherwise, yeah, it's never going to fly there.
Being that I don't see an advantage to the alternative design and location, I would be leaning towards granting the 60-day based on evaluating an alternative location. But that may not be the leaning of counsel.
Just for clarification, you mean making it specifically a 60-day continuance for alternate locations?
I hate to make decisions sometimes, I know, sometimes we have to, I hate to make decisions based on fear of lawsuits rather than what I feel is correct. That always pains me, I know, sometimes we have to think of that, but.
Sorry.
I would make a change to it, but I would really, really hope in the 60 days that we all work together and find another location.
And Mike, with what's been said, you know, I think the continuance is prudent from a legal standpoint and not only that, from a negotiating standpoint for providing service that we do need here in the city of Lakeport. It doesn't change anything as far as the public hearing because the public hearing, this agenda item is still active. So, there's still, there's an appeal that does have to be decided on. If we grant the continuance, it'll be decided on September 1st if council members choose us. And, you know, my opinion, regardless of how the continuance is worded, is I'm in consensus with my fellow council members, is that I am looking at only an alternative location option. I just, I don't proceed unless there is something magically that can be created, a cellphone tower turned into for that property. Personally, I just, I just don't see it flying there. And I can't agree myself to support that, so. But I would, I would support a continuance if the deal is to be done to look at alternative locations. So, with that, the item at hand is, do we need to decide on a continuance and then first or take no action and then continue?
Well, we have.
Oh.
I'll make a, I'll move to grant a 60-day continuance for the request of the project applicant for the purpose of evaluating alternative designs and locations.
We have a motion and a second. Anything final from counsel? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Yes. One opposed and motion carries 4-1. Councilmember Stillman, take the second. Well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming out. I know that's a very contentious issue, but, you know, the counsel is working hard up here and we have heard your voices and will continue to hear your voices. And if it reflected was September 1st in that continuance, we said 60 days, would that actually? Yeah. I would prefer it to be on the September 1st council meeting, not the second one.
Yeah, it has to be on the September 1st because the 60 days ends on September 5th, which is.
Okay, copy that. Okay. All right, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen, as always, for coming out and voicing your opinion. It's really important to us and it does help us make decisions, especially the tough ones. So, thank you, Ms. Walker, too, for joining us tonight. Okay, moving on to council business. Our city clerk has this, this is our league voting delegate for our League of California Cities Annual Conference in September. Madam Clerk?
As you're all aware, the conference is coming up, I believe four of the five of you are planning to go. And just the Lakeport has one vote at the conference, they're voting on the conference or league resolution. And so, what we need to do is let them know who our voting delegate is going to be and then on alternatives.
And I think this will be on Friday, so, and the general session. And usually is that in the morning or, it's usually done by lunch, isn't it?
It's usually around about.
Around lunchtime. So, that will be something to consider for all of us. I unfortunately cannot be the voting delegate because I am the voting delegate for the Redwood Empire Division for our league. So, and the bylaws state one person, one vote, so I can't vote twice. So, we will have to have a delegate and an alternate delegate from those that are going that can be there on Friday. And it doesn't have to be a council member, it can also be.
That's the end of the meeting.
Yeah.
Like false and business stuff.
But preferably if there are council members going to be there on Friday, we should definitely.
We're all writing together, so.
So, we all stay, we all have to stay.
Together, so we'll all be attending that meeting.
Well, take your own card and stay.
Well, at that point, if that's going to be the case, then maybe a pro temp, be the voting delegate and then Kenny here. Maria, you guys can decide.
I've done it before, yeah. So, I'll move to nominate Mayor Pro Tem Montina as the voting delegate and Councilmember Ray Turner as the first alternate and, oh, and there's a second alternate? You have to have two alternates?
You by default.
And I'll nominate myself as the second alternate voting delegate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference to be held September 3rd through October 2nd, 2015 in San Jose, California.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much, Janelle. Next, item B, under our community development director, this is the request for proposal for housing grant consulting services. Ms. Ringham?
Yes, Tricia Franco, who's been running our housing program for the past eight years or so, is retiring and as such, we're going to, we don't have, housing programs and things like that have some very specific technical details and stuff associated with putting together all the loan packages and everything on that. So, the city is looking to, to enter and send out a request for a proposal for, to help assist the city in finishing our current home grant proposal, which it has, we can expend money through the next six months or so, but there's also a number of different closeout pieces to that grant as well. So, bringing on consulting help, which is expending the money as well as assisting in the closeout. And we have the draft request for proposal in front of you as an attachment. This has also been reviewed by our home grant, our home program representative in Sacramento and has their blessing as well.
Questions to counsel? I just had one, what do we expect of just a small party here?
As far as what's, what's still left and what's removed?
Well, RFP, I mean, for this consultant, what are we, what are we expecting to, for this that caused us?
Well, there is money built into the home grant for their time and their services, so it would be, and, you know, that's.
So, it'll be budgeted from the existing grant?
Exactly.
Any more? If there are no more questions, if you want to, the public, like to comment on this? Controversial subject. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to counsel for action.
I'll move to authorize staff to proceed with sending out a request for proposals for a P for housing grant consulting services.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any further from counsel? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much, Ms. Ringham. Council Communications, Mr. Stillman?
Actually, I'm going to pass, other than I was kind of curious since I was out of town, probably get an update from Brad, how things went for July in town.
Yeah, I was planning on getting that.
Okay, fine, I'll do that, I'm good.
Mr. Parlett, I was fortunate enough with the mayor to attend the mayor and council member executive forum down in Monterey. And I'd like to say that spent six and a half hours on the road going down, seven and a half hours on the road coming back, which almost equals the amount of time I spent in meetings, but I would have done it anyway.
Long time.
Yeah. Incomprehensible amount of traffic and it makes me so pleased to be a citizen of Lake County. I have told at least a score of people that I am never going south out of Lake County ever again, except maybe to Sacramento to go to Vegas. But there was some great, unbelievable sessions and they were communicating with residents, dealing with disruptive meetings. We got to have the Director of the Department of Water Resources, we got to hear about a lot of the problems that are happening throughout the state and it's nice to know that we're not in there with them, but we understand that they're creating these GSA's, these different departments and I think the mayor and I were in that session. We had a great session on, like, not unlike what we had to deal today, but dealing with, with staff and council and administration versus legislature, how we have to make decisions based on moral, ethical, representative fiduciary responsibilities, really great stuff. I think that we came away with a really good understanding about how you have to stack these different priorities and how they're so important to different people and who you are determines how you'll make a decision, it's great stuff. And I, I never want to miss an opportunity to get this kind of learning. And then, when I came back on Monday morning, I went to the, along with a lot of the staff here from the city, Dan and Margaret and Kelly and Janelle, we all became certified tourist ambassadors on Monday morning and we were ready, along with four of our, all four of our staff actually went there from Lakeview Market to the glass stand. I think it's a great program and I think it's one of the best investments. I think it's a great program, and I think it's one of the best investments the county's probably ever made, and it's going to return many, many times the investment that they did, and I think it's one of those things that everybody should get on board with, especially the people that probably least want to do it, that are out there serving cocktails and sodas and water and pumping gas or taking the money for pumping gas, whatever. But the CTA program went really in favor of them. I thought it's a great program and a great class. That's it.
Yeah, that was, council member Turner and I were the first one. It's, I'm happy to have programs like that. It's really gentle. Both of us love it.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
I just wanted to thank staff and volunteers who cleaned out that swim area in time for the detonation cardboard regatta. It was, that was a long event, and I'd never seen that before. And it just made a huge difference to have a clean area for them to be collapsing their boats in. I just wanted to say thank you very much for that.
Pro Tem?
I was going to say the same thing. That whole park looked really great, and the regatta was hilarious. I loved it. And there were people on all the docks, sitting all the way around, knowing their shape now. It was the coolest thing, very thing. And the fireworks were wonderful. Did they do it from a different spot this year?
I don't know. For the breakfast, it was last year.
Anybody know? Well, we had a really good view.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had this perfect, mad perfect view, but before, I'd never seen the words exact that word.
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
Can't compare it.
Yeah.
Thanks, Pro Tem. Al Taiko, council member Perlet, words on the mayor and council members' conference. It was, they did it right, and, you know, bringing it back, I think was a good idea. So I would definitely recommend if anybody does have the opportunity, when it comes back, to attend it. And we were lucky because there were only two sessions, two different subjects during each session, and so council member Perlet and I were lucky that we could split each one. So we got, both of us, we got all the information. The only ones we didn't attend were basically how to get along with your city attorney and your city manager. We already had that one taken care of, so it made me go to a more interesting session than it was. But definitely want to extend again thank you to the police department, public works. Man, you guys, home run as you knocked it out of the park. The park looked awesome. It looks great now, which is amazing when you think about how many people were down there on Saturday, and council member Turner and I were here at the command staff, long city manager meeting. It's nice to see the other jurisdictions come in and, I mean, systems wired, LT, you know, again, did the briefing, had everything ready to go, and I'm sure we'll have an update for the chief, but from my point of view, knocked it out of the park. So thank you, Gaylord, for doing that. It's a great fourth, great fourth of July weekend. Again, the fireworks look great. LAFCO next week? I think we're on that one, too, aren't we? LAFCO, the sphere of influence. We haven't discussed on that meeting yet for city of Lakeport. And, yeah, and that's it for me, other than Cohen Camden. Thank goodness the weather has come down. Kevin?
Stormy thunder on the sphere of influence item for LAFCO next week.
Sorry about that.
Just to kind of key in with council member Perlet's going there, we've got a couple members of our staff who will be attending that certified tourist ambassador, including myself at the end of this month.
Twenty-second? Excellent. Chee?
Yeah, regarding the Fourth of, or Fourth of July, first of all, I wanted to thank council member Turner and Mayor Sheil, city manager, and Mark and Doug for being at the briefing with us. We did what we usually did. We had briefing. We invited public works in. We tried to work with them pretty closely. They did a great job, as usual. We had a good time working with them. It was a very, very well-behaved crowd out here in the park, one of the best I've ever seen. I have never had as many thank yous that we got that night from citizens just telling us thanks for being there. I mean, they were telling our officers all over out there in the field, and then people were even telling by city hall, telling us thanks for being there. So that was great. I've never had that many of these before, so. Yeah, and it would be, and no, real no problems in the park, a couple minor fireworks issues in the park, but those were dealt with swiftly, and people, they ate after we talked to them. Other than a couple of intoxicated guys that wanted to fight with us, you know, towards the end, right before the fireworks went off, that was really the only problem we had. In the rest of the city, calls were mostly traffic or firework-related after the event here, you know, mostly related to illegal fireworks, people shooting off a lot of illegal fireworks. So we tried to respond to those as best we could, and then the only other major incident was a highly intoxicated individual on a quad runner that was racing around in the North High 16, Forkett Avenue area, which ended up crashing and getting injured and resisting and taken off the campus. Though it was a pretty, pretty uneventful, safe weekend, so. And as far as the outside agencies, this year, we had, we didn't have as many as usual because there was a lot of other events going on in the county, but we did get assistance from the sheriff's office, probation department, and highway patrol. So we're going to put together letters thanking them on behalf of the police department and city, so we'll get the, most of the time, we'll have the mayor sign them on behalf of council as well.
Thank you. Thanks, Shee. Ms. Shee?
I have really good news. We are looking to get an associate planner, and Kevin's really happy about this. An associate planner started on Monday, hopefully, so.
I can introduce him to you next week.
Ms. Brandon?
Just to add to the Fourth of July, I went back to the park on Sunday, and I was just amazed at how clean they got the park from the event the next day. I was really impressed. I've never seen it get that quickly into shape. And just a quick note that I won't be at the next city council meeting, but I'll have Doug Ryder here for issues and for introductions.
I think I've spoken enough.
I just wanted to congratulate the mainstream association for a great job they did with the Fourth of July, as usual, with the event going on, and, yeah, staff, great, appreciate that very much. Constant compliments from the community on the park and the docks, so that's very nice to hear positive about that, that it's only, you know, staff, of the first staff at the park, staff, you know, excellent job, so, thank you.
You know, Lake County, I mean, as a whole, on that Saturday, I mean, Chief talking about resources, I mean, we had both cities with parades, both firework shows, festivals, and the fairgrounds with the racetrack and fireworks going on there, so I know that the resources were spread thin, and it looks like the county handled it well, so, fun everyone. Anything else, Janelle?
No, we have nothing.
All right, well, with that, thank you again for everyone coming out. Johnny thinks you're coming. Elizabeth, as always, you guys, thank you for coming up. This meeting is adjourned.